Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting Monday, May 2nd at 7:00 p.m. Call the meeting to order. In terms of announcements, I only have one. The rain guards were good to it yesterday. They held up. We had a great parade, and I just want to thank everyone who participated and pitched in and got it done. And it was a great day for Millville yesterday. Thank you all. Approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of April 5th, 2016, executive session. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for April 5th at 7:00 p.m., executive session.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Minutes of April 13th at 6:00 p.m. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for April 13th at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
April 19th at 6:00 p.m. and 7:00 p.m. Did we vote together or one at a time?
Do the six and then the... It doesn't matter.
Yeah, we'll do the six. Take a vote. Make a motion to accept the meeting of April 19th at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for April 19th at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye. And the last one, I make a motion for April 27th at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Roll.
Aye.
Payroll total forty-two thousand, three hundred and five dollars and ninety-four cents. No, and we have one on the vendor warrant. And that total is fifty-seven thousand... I'm sorry, five-hundred-seventy-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and eighty-three cents.
That's the BMI payment.
It's like something's big is in there.
Half a million dollars.
Yes.
Just a half a million, higher.
So, motion to approve the warrant. Make a motion to approve the warrants as read.
Second.
We'll sign them later. Rule.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, can I ask, I see that you have a big stack. Is that because every...
All the backup information.
All the... Everything that has been submitted?
Yeah.
Okay. I know we've talked about that.
Why don't you want to go through?
No, so like if I... Like, no. No, so if you... If there's a bill in there you want to question, you have the actual receipt, you have the information. And I know we've talked about that in other meetings. I just saw the big stack, so that's why I asked.
Next on the agenda is invited guest speakers and presenters and...
Mr. Chairman, if I could just point of order. I need to recuse myself due to the proximity of the topic, the property in question, to my own home residence, so I'm gonna step out, please.
Residents from Providence Street on the subject of 171 Central Street. Welcome.
Evening.
You have all your... You have building, you have Florida Health, you have planning, and you have Conservation Commission here to respond to your questions. Is an opening remark, you know, we're... This is a sad state we've gotten ourselves into. And the objective here is to find solutions, work it out, set a plan. And we have all the experts here to answer questions. And the only comment I would make at this point is that I wouldn't want to compromise any potential future litigation until we're advised by our town council. So, Timmy, have the floor.
Okay. Now, we all know at 171 Central Street, Mr. Ibusi has been bringing in building debris for many years, letting people know that it was a hazardous waste site. He's been at several meetings where he has admitted this, his lawyer has admitted this. At the last COMCOM meeting, his lawyer admitted again about the McDonald's debris that was buried. For those not familiar, the McDonald's in Milford was considered a historical contaminated site, so half of that building is still buried in our backyard. The lawyer has said he is supposed to remove it, but again, there's no plans, no permits, no nothing yet as of this date. What we'd like to see the town do, if it's possible, to get a plan of what's going on this property. It's been agricultural, it's been a farm, it's been a sand pit, according to the owners. Four years ago, a petition was brought to you folks to ask to look into this, and here we are four years later. What we'd like to see get done is, you know, besides the permits, is he gonna be able to get... Put a bond on this property? Because he could just walk away. I mean, he already made his money. He's made hundreds of thousands of dollars already between the disposal of all the illegal material, the trees, the soil, everything. The other issues that we had, I mean, he's already violated town laws, state laws, and federal laws. The town laws are the buffer zones, bringing in enough materials, working without permits. The state would be with the hazardous waste material, working within the wetlands and all that. Plus, I'm sure there's a lot more of other laws that I'm not aware of. The biggest question I have is, this is agricultural with earth and farm removal stuff. Can that... He was originally given an exemption to do whatever... What he thought he could do whatever he wanted. Can that be rescinded? I mean, that should be taken back. I mean, it's pretty much start from day one. It's obvious he's just using that as a big sandbox out back.
Excuse me. Invite Mr. Olson up to... Joe, would you like to?
The notice of condition that basically expires in 2017?
Three years, yes.
Three years.
Order of conditions, yeah.
Order of conditions.
It basically is three years to implement all the conditions and close it out. And at that point, after three years, we can take action against them.
What would that action be?
Well, it could be fines. I suppose... I'm not 100% sure, but I suppose a lien on the property, something like that, but I don't expect that to happen with the DEP involved at this point. Some of the conditions are... He's already done in terms of stabilizing the ground within the buffer zone and all that, but I... Other conditions are just moving the stuff out of there, you know, the materials he's storing within the buffer zone, so I fully expect for him to comply, especially now that the DEP is involved, so. But I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. I mean, it's three years from now, so...
And the penalties came into effect initially two years ago?
I'm sorry, second?
Those penalties are in effect presently?
I'm sure. No, there's no penalties in effect at this point. I mean, we see had a cease and desist order. He stopped all work there. We went through the hearing process. Once the DEP got involved, they advised us to just finish and close down the hearing. That way, they can proceed, because right now, he couldn't get on site to do anything, any of the cleanup or anything that we all want him to do. So, that's what we did. We drafted up order conditions. It's very clearly stated what we want, especially in terms of testing underground and make sure there's no buried waste, you know, the construction debris. It appears as none within the buffer zone to the wetland, but there could be, and we just want proof of that, so we'd like them to dig a couple of test pits. If the DEP doesn't do that, then it's in our order conditions for them to do that, so... I'm sorry, at this point in time, we're satisfied with the direction it's going in terms of the wetland bylaws and what he needs to do, so...
What about restoration work? The embankments and those kinds of things?
So, in terms of restoration, we're not having replant trees. And frankly, it seemed like a fool's errand. So, what we want is just for it to be restored, or, sorry, stabilized, which it is now. There's grass growing there. The ground's stabilized, there won't be any more erosion into the wetland, and then we just don't want him to touch it after that. So, just leave the buffer zone alone going forward, so... And we asked him to place four large stones on the 100-foot buffer line in the southern portion of the... Because right now, there's a big berm out there demarcating where the wetland line is, even though it doesn't show that the buffer's a little bit further out, but in the south, there's nothing there. So, he's gonna put... The foreboulders there under our direction and just never touch that again, and we'll just periodically check in on them, you know, going forward, so...
In terms... So, what you're saying is, I may ask, you drill holes, test holes for contaminant?
No, we're not looking at contaminants. As far as... The DEP did a walkthrough. They were storing some materials there, some appeared to be containers with liquid in it. We didn't open any up or look at them. We just, you know, looked at them, you know, just from a few feet away. They appear that they could be hazardous, but the DEP came out, had a walkthrough, they said they weren't. So, we're going with the DEP's word on that.
So, you're not gonna drill?
No, the DEP might, or the EPA might. What we're looking for is solid waste buried, because we know, we've seen it, like in my initial walkthrough, it was clear that there was solid waste buried outside of our jurisdiction. There's no evidence that it's within the 100-foot buffer zone to the wetland, but we just want proof of that. So, dig a test pit, let me see the subsurface, and if there's no... If visually it passes, then we're good.
The only reason why I ask that, you're saying you've got solid contaminants in there. What's that gonna do to the water underneath? I mean, that's what the tests...
Yeah.
But the DEP's gonna decide to do that, correct?
Yeah, it's up to the DEP. We closed out our hearing and put the testing in DEP's hands, essentially, so...
According to your order conditions, do you have stipulation you ask to follow all the local bylaws?
Yes, I believe that's in there. I wrote up... We have a standard set of lines that goes into every order condition, and I believe that's in there. And then I wrote up the extra set specific to this site, but I'm not 100% sure, but I believe so, yes. That's a given.
So, that's for the wetlands and buffer zone.
Exactly.
That condition that I was talking about has to do with all the other.
Right.
So, we will have to file an earth removal permit. Okay? And that's the new zoning bylaws of June 2015.
Right.
So, those you can stipulate. The board of selectmen has complete control on that, and they can have the bond issued, have restrictions, whatever you guys determine. They can hold them completely accountable. You can have them test soils.
Can that go... Can that be retroactive or...
That's from this time on.
Okay.
So, if the DEP tries to take any dirt out and put any dirt in, actually putting the dirt back in is a touchy area, because it's an earth removal permit that you guys are issuing, not an earth taking in permit. Bylaws might want to be tweaked so that it's more robust.
So, Joe, in terms of proceeding or having a bond put on this, what would be our next step?
Well, I think one of the things, and I... In part, I'm gonna read to the planning... To the email I sent out on the 27th regarding this. One of the things, especially if it is determined that the earth removal bylaw has been violated and that also, you know, the whole question that the residents raise as far as agricultural, that does open up other issues. For example, the town under the general bylaw has a stormwater bylaw. Any activity within... That's in excess of an acre requires approval from the planning board. Because they fell under the earth removal for agricultural use, they never came in front of the planning board for any sort of approval. So, if it is... If we do determine, and if it has been stated in public meetings or in front of conservation that there is not an agricultural activity that has occurred, I believe this section of the bylaw would apply, and that they would have to apply for stormwater permit with the planning board. The question is, in my mind, the effective date, without any sort of notice of violation that goes out, say, from the earth removal board or its agent to the property owner that they're in violation. I probably want to talk with town council to see if I can just send that out, because the planning board and its agent are responsible for that bylaw. The bylaw does allow for two mechanisms of enforcement. One, to pursue criminal. Basically, criminal penalty, right out of the bylaw, and if person violates any provision of this bylaw, regulation, order, or permit issued, they're under, shall be punished by a fine of not more than $100. Each day or part thereof that such violation occurs continues as a separate violation. So, you come over a course of a year or two, you know, you're getting into thousands of dollars. Then we also have the option of noncriminal disposition, which then, in this case, the highway surveyor is the enforcing person. So, I think one of the things we need to first identify is, one, maybe when exactly the violation has occurred, or that date by which this agricultural exemption has gone away, so that we can start some of these other things. The requirement for a bond through the earth removal board, I think that's something that the board itself, as well as staff and town council, is then able to assist. The planning board doesn't have any bonding ability for that. But, you know, along with this use, there also ends up being, not only the stormwater, but then also other zonings, other portions of the zoning bylaw that also apply. We have a buffer requirement for any use that's nonresidential, that's required up against residential properties. And so, in this case, Section 100-505 requires a buffer between residential properties and uses, requiring a special permit to use table. General earth removal activities is not specifically identified. However, it would be possible to work with the building department to determine if it's considered industrial use E2. If it is considered general industrial, then that would require a special permit by the planning board, and that we'd have to apply that buffer requirement. And without any... Without any conformance with the bylaw, then we're looking at typical zoning enforcement of that provision for lack of meeting that performance standard.
Sorry, is it possible to have it be two at once, agricultural and industrial, or can it only be one?
Well...
If it was considered agricultural at one point?
I mean, that's... The whole thing was that this was originally gonna be Christmas trees. No plants have ever been formed that presented a bringing in topsoil to then start that process. And I think at some point, we have to say, you know, your statement that this is agricultural has not been demonstrated. We're pursuing unless you have a clear and concise plan that identifies a timeline, timeline by which these are doing, going on. That's where it gets hard, and...
Does it sound like if they were considered to be industrial, then they might have a loophole, where if they were considered agricultural before that, it just seems...
Yeah, and that's where it comes down to the challenge as far as identifying that use. What is really going on there? And...
You know, I have one question. The buffer, you talk about the buffer. What is the planning board recommending for a buffer? What is... What do they have to maintain between the town people and his...
It basically needs to be a...
How wide, how...
There's not a width, but it basically is a performance standard, that it's either vegetated or actually fencing, so that it actually protects the view and, you know, of abutting properties from that ongoing use. So, depending on the use, that's where, because it's a special permit, the planning board has more discretion, where it could be requiring taller trees that eventually get to a height that really screen it, or it could be something lower, because maybe the activity is less intense.
That's something the planning board sets the mandate on that?
We have discretion during the special permit process. So, and the planning board had history before the current property owner. You know, we had people inquiring about a use that's a nursery with mulch bins for, you know, all different types of mulch. We had different people talk about it, and we discussed buffer requirements, because you did have residential properties. The use is where we're gonna buy a special permit, but those never moved forward. And then that's where this use that essentially got established through the earth removal board, you know, I think that's where that got its legs, and the question is really probably the assistance of town council will be needed. Just how do we sort of sever that previous determination? Because there should have been a determination that they provided to the earth removal board that is claiming their agricultural exemption under the bylaw. So, I think the earth removal board would have the ability to go back, say, you know, we find that you did not live up to that determination, and then pursue enforcement. That then allows for us to establish a date by which we could pursue, you know, at least inform them of violation of the stormwater bylaw.
All right, so with all that said, my question would be, what's our next step? It's like the chairman said, gotta have steps, how we're gonna take care of this mess. What would be...
I think as a board, we need to discuss this with council. And we need to think about rescinding the agricultural use, review the earth removal, and do that PDQ.
And then go from there?
And go from there.
Okay.
Just starting. I like it.
You okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely. Better than where we were four years ago.
Is there anything else that...
Now, testing of the stuff, you know, debris that's outside the Conservation Commission, that falls into what, the board of health? Because at the last few meetings of the Conservation Commission, the owners of the property and the lawyer themselves have said that there still is a lot of debris buried from McDonald's there, stuff that you can't see, because again, it's buried, so...
We'd have to discuss with town council what we could... We can only address what we can see.
Yeah.
And there is no visible board health violations. The DEP, there was nothing visible in the DEP laws, so...
I'm sorry, when I did my first walkthrough there, it was clear that it was buried construction debris.
I want...
I have pictures of it. I mean, it was pretty obvious a year ago. You guys do...
I did a walkthrough, yeah, or...
But I mean, if you saw construction debris, is that on its face not violation? Or if you saw construction debris, you'd say that is a violation?
It's not a violation. And I couldn't tell if it was buried or it was rained over. There was a pile that he was working on.
Yeah, yeah.
But our health inspector didn't see an issue?
Right, so from what you saw, even if you saw, say, some wires or rebar or whatever come out of the ground, some chunks of concrete that on its face wouldn't be a violation?
No.
Okay.
There was no visible signs that anything was buried, nor was it hazardous. I mean, he said...
I agree about the hazardous portion.
I understand it, the size of the concrete, but we had to give him the benefit of the doubt that he was gonna break it up, because that's what he told us.
Yeah, according to the lawyer in our last meeting, apparently the size of the concrete chunks doesn't make it hazardous.
Yes.
But breaking it up makes it not hazardous.
Correct.
And I agree, everything I saw, there nothing looks like there'd be recheat come out or anything like that, it just looks like inner construction debris.
Correct, and it's been rained on.
It's definitely there, and it's definitely buried, it's clear.
Well, I'm not sure how clear it was buried, but there was... I mean, I'm not saying yes or no.
Well, what happened is, he went for the walk and checked it out. Within a day after that, they came in and started covering a lot of that stuff up. So, that's why you didn't get to see a lot of the stuff.
I'm not sure. I know our health agent, he walked the site on June 26, 2015. I think I did it shortly after that, and at that point, we did not see anything that we could enforce. So, if there... I know there's been other towns that they have made them dig stuff up, but I mean, obviously, we'd have to talk to town council and see what... How we could go about that.
Justin, there's also a question from the residents there. The loom that they brought in for the ground cover, there was concern of possible contamination of the loom, or what the condition of the loom was?
I have not heard of that, heard of that yet, but I do know the EPA, they did hire a company called Weston Solutions. That is, from what I... They are doing some investigation and talking about test wells, but I have not heard anything about a loom.
Well, he hasn't brought loom in yet. It was just all the building debris brought in.
All right.
The only loom that he has there is, if you want to call it that, is stuff he just piled up into big berms.
Can I just... They had to remove five feet of loom underneath the McDonald's debris that was brought in, so if that was mixed in or wherever that went to, so there was loom that came from that site, if it was with that building debris.
I think we need to talk to council. We need to talk to council.
There's a lot of questions for town council as to what steps we could take legally enforcement.
Did you have something, Ms. Barbara? Larry?
Just to clarify, I think the loom under the McDonald's prior to the... You know, McDonald's was a gas station, is that right?
It was next to the gas station. The tanks exploded, and they had to remove it from the Shell station first, and then when they built the new McDonald's, they had to take all that soil and building debris and all that.
Okay. So, there's very high potential to catch this.
Done, I have to halt talk here.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe.
All right. So, we'll work... It's likely we'll work to put a plan together, first step being...
All right. So we'll work, select one, we'll work to put a plan together, uh, first step being, involve the town council immediately. In reviewing the permits that have been issued.
Okay.
To this point, and we'll keep you apprised.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, I can help you with the date that he was saying he needed.
Okay.
That's about it.
I want to thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think that's you. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, is there any specific date you would like to meet with town council?
Basically, uh, as soon as possible. When the board is, full board is available. I was thinking in terms of the earth removal board being present as well.
Okay.
Town hall study committee. Mr. Barber, Mr. Finn. Again, I hate to say this, but, uh, I'd be, uh,
Where's Jennifer?
We get Jen? Get Jennifer in here.
Did you see Jennifer out there? This might be a police group on the. Why don't you just sit over there?
Rich.
Rich. Plenty of seats. Sitting nice and comfortable.
Also, I want to say, at some point in this whole process and, and looking to relocate a site to the town hall that, uh, I, I don't, wouldn't want to compromise any negotiation issues that might come up or. So I would, uh, caution that we beguired in things we talked about tonight. And that if we, uh, we need to do something, additionally, I would recommend that, uh, we go into executive session at a later time.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fair. All right, um, first of all, just to tell you how we got to where we're at right now. Board of Selectmen Directive in a townwide search for volunteers took place on August fifteenth. And that was in response to the, uh, one hundred and twenty-three page report that was done earlier, thanks to a number of people here, concerning the condition report assessment of the, of this building. Uh, so as response to that, the Board of Selectmen decided that they needed to do, do a search. And those volunteers that came forward are the three gentlemen you see here. We then had our first meeting on Tuesday, January twenty-nineteenth, I should say, um, on two thousand sixteen at seven PM at the municipal center. Uh, Rich Crivello at that time, seated to my left over here, indeed, was elected chair and commenced organizing the committee. Uh, at that point in time, uh, he came up with, uh, from the Board of Selectmen charge and, and about, uh, these seven establishments that was required by the Board of Selectmen for the search committee to, uh, put forward. At that meeting, uh, after we, uh, went over the charge and took a look at what the seven, uh, segments were, if you must, of those, of that charge, we then started to go to work on making assignments against some of those seven. Some of them we put at a later date, some of them we put up front. One of the first ones we had was to try to establish some space requirements for a new town hall. Because the Kleinfeldt report clearly demonstrated that it would be probably cost prohibitive to us to do a complete renovation of this building as well as interrupting any business that we may have here in town. So we, first thing we did was establish some space requirements. And Mr. Crivello was much more adept at that than, than I am. And he put together a spreadsheet and was looking at the space criteria by job description and need. So if you had someone that was an executive, they may have a bigger requirement for a small area for two or three seats relative to, uh, a clerical function where the person had a regular process of what they needed to, to do. So we, we tried to come up with some sort of a space allocation with that. We also came up, started to talk about an interview sheet. There's a couple ways to do it. One was to actually interview the candidates and to see what they needed because in some particular places like the assessor's office, they need a large place to store maps and things of that nature. The second thing we wanted to do is review the existing buildings for feasibility for housing of the municipal offices. Now, at the time we met here back in, uh, January nineteenth, there wasn't that urgent cry that we heard that came out when the building started to crack. Uh, I believe that was May, uh, excuse me, March sixteenth of this year. Uh, that, that caused a, a more of an emergence situation than it did from the original processing we were doing. Uh, at that point in time, we did look at, uh, three, um, potentials. And I'll just mention what those potentials are for the public's knowledge on that. But one of them that came forward was that perhaps we could look at the elementary school, uh, and, and see if there was some space allocation up there. I believe if you look at the building on the left-hand side. So there was some consideration that perhaps we could take what we deemed to be, um, a space requirement of about eight thousand square feet and see if we could use that spacing up there, um, as, as a remedy for this building. There are a number of different issues with that and we discussed those in further meetings. The second remedy we came up with was to, uh, look at the senior center. And the senior center is not a long-term solution, but could be an interim solution. Um, and it made some sense to do that. It is a town building, you wouldn't have to go through Cory checks and things of that nature that you would be required to do if you were looking at the, uh, looking at the elementary school, plus you get into SBA reimbursements and things of that nature. The third thing we thought about was the Cushman, um, is that what it is, Cushman's? Scotsman, Scotsman's mobiles that we did when we did the, when we did the, uh, when we did the senior center. We, we had some mobiles. Um, there was an expense to that, obviously. We could indeed put, if necessary, uh, we could use those for a period of time. But again, you've got an expense to that, you've got wiring problems and, you know, things that could happen here to, uh, to make it a little disjointed. So those are the three remedies we had without an emergency knowledge at that time. Okay? When the emergency knowledge came up in May fifteenth or sixteenth, I think, when Helen sent it out, uh, the crack that started to enlarge up there, uh, obviously the, the, uh, we shifted quickly over to try to think of different ways to, to make this happen. And we, we discussed a few of those things as well. So that source of feasibility that we've done is, we really don't have, the library didn't, we didn't think had enough space to be able to accommodate what we needed, nor is to have the computer accessibility that we needed, uh, to make things work. Uh, the third thing we were asked to do was develop a budget for a build out of existing, existing space, if equitable, applicable, I should say. We, we haven't got, we put that downstream because of the things I just mentioned. Locate a suitable building site for the new town. Now, this is where Lincoln can help a little bit. I've got, um, from the planner, we went to the planner and asked the planner if he'd be kind enough to take a look at an eight thousand square foot facility. John, I don't know if you can get that one. There you go. And, um, uh, within that, uh, he has come across with, with three possible locations. What I have done is I've put down the date on the top and the location of the three locations. First one would be two twenty-six Main Street, which would be across the street over here, uh, be next to where the cemetery is. And these are town-owned properties. You've got one point, was it oh-nine acres that's available over there? And you can see the configuration that he's put to scale here on this drawing is indeed eight thousand square feet. So that's what it would look like. Now, again, we're just looking for a location. If we were to put a new building up and we thought it made more sense to put one up the center of town than it did to put it way up in some of the neighborhoods somewhere. So that's what it would look like. That does not indicate anything to do with site planning, whether we've got granite there, whether we can put septic in or what, none of that. Okay, it's just that would it fit in that one point oh-nine space? And the answer to that is yes, it would. But all the other site things have to be answered.
These are a first step in a long process, so I wouldn't get too wrapped around whether it fits and whether, how it, how it looks or anything like that. This is the first step.
So the next one you've got here is literally across the street. And that one is Five Central Street. There is currently a, uh, a building over there right now, um, that has the three white pillars in front. I think that's the hallmark of it. Uh, that building over there does have, uh, more spacing. I think there's the four acres or something there, isn't there, in that report you had? I got it here. There's actually, uh, you know, two twenty-six Main Street, that one we did, this is the, uh.
Five Central.
Five Central Street, you see that one there? I think there was enough acreage on that one. We got a.
What's on on that map?
What's on on that one? We got, we got a listing of forty-eight town properties from the planner to say, hey, here's the possible properties the town owns. These are the three that came out of that search, okay? Uh, you do have the, uh, one across the street, as I mentioned. Again, he dropped in a, um, just a diagram of what eight thousand square feet would look like on, on, on that piece of property. And the third one you've got here, which is kind of an interesting one that we didn't think of, you'll see a outline of it that is kind of in blue. And that again is the eight thousand square foot footprint. And if you look at that, it actually would be right in front of this building. Is one that, uh, the planner came and gave us, um, on April twenty-first, actually. And said, here's another possibility in the center of town. And this room would, would literally be in front of this building. Okay, so those were the recommendations, or at least the availability, I shouldn't say recommendations, availability of what, um, the town planner gave us based on an eight thousand square foot, um, facility. Now, the reason I mentioned eight thousand square feet is because when we took a look at the Kleinfeldt, um, assessment, this whole complex here is ten thousand square feet. What we did was we thought that there may be some overspacing here. Thought potentially we could maybe make it smaller. So, um, the unfortunate thing is that when Kleinfeldt did this, um, I think Helen was involved in pretty much, uh, telling them what spacing would be necessary and how we needed more space in the assessor's office or we needed more space in the clerk's office or whatever. When that took place, the, the actual rollout of that number actually increased to twelve thousand square feet. Uh, well, we took a look at that and Rich then uses a certain metrics that he has from the federal government. And it says every person is required or has to have at least X amount of square feet. And if you are doing a function, uh, you have this, if you have obviously a higher standard, you might get a little bigger. When we put that together and multiplied it times the number of employees that you literally have here in the building, we felt very comfortable that eight thousand square foot facility would be more than adequate. So when we took the Kleinfeldt number, which was based on twelve thousand square feet, just did the simple math and reduced it by twenty-five percent. That's where the number of the three million dollars came up.
I think the Kleinfeldt number included the three existing meeting rooms that are in this building now. And when we talked, is, there's probably not a need for all three of those on there. There might be a need for one and possibly several other smaller rooms that you could use. So you could harvest, actually harvest some of that space on that. And, um.
Makes sense.
We did the cursory look on that, we, we figured out the admin space based on the number of employees. And we, we took some, uh, storage space and everything else. But there's still a need to sit down with each one of the departments and come up with what I call special administrative space, i.e. the file cabinets, copy areas, uh, specific things that are unique to their department. I know the assessor has, uh, big plotters and everything else in there. The planner has some specialized needs. So those things I think are next on, on the agenda is to sit down with them. And that way we can come up with a definitive need that the selectmen can agree to. And that's what we use as our baseline to go looking for, uh, a piece of property or an existing building.
Uh, many of those, uh, functions that Rich talks about, we, we've got here in this document. And it, it demonstrates what he has talked about. And we've plugged in numbers.
Larry?
I'm gonna need you for a second in a bit.
So we've, we've plugged, we've plugged numbers, we've plugged numbers into this so we can at least get a start to it. That's the process we're using, okay? Are we finished? No. Uh, we, uh, had a discussion, I guess, uh, between us. And one of the things, do you want to set a standard first, which is what I think Richard mentioned and I'm advocating for. And then from that standard, uh, interview the each department, I think is the proper way to do it because there are abnormalities to every department. So using that as the rule of thumb, that's what we intended to do and start the interview process. Okay? So that was, um, looking at the suitable, buildable, um, sites and how we would go about making that happen. The next thing we had was to develop a budget for the construction of the new town hall. Well, obviously, until you get some of those particulars.
Can we back up just a little bit? Uh, are we expanding the scope of, of this committee to conduct those interviews?
Um, it would be our recommendation that we would put together the, uh, the process. Whomever does those interviews would be happy to do it. It's, it's something that we can do if, if required. Helen was kind enough to give us the information before without benefit of those interviews. So we feel as if now that we should have someone with a standard, be able to go in and do an interview and ask those specific questions, Jermaine, to what the size of the building is or what this, what their office needs to be for certain housing things. So, uh, would we be willing to, I, I guess we'd be, if we're involved in it.
Absolutely, I mean, it's just the three of us. If there's more people that want to be involved in this committee.
We'd love to have more than just three, since we're the ones who did the original report. So, uh, that, does that answer your question?
That answers my question and, uh, Larry needs to get upstairs.
Okay.
But the question I had for Larry was the imminent, imminent, uh, situation here with this building upstairs. And if we had a definitive input from the structural people is, is to to say that we're safe being here or are we clear, is, has there been a significant change? He indicated that, not mu, he indicated by looking at photographs that, uh, he hadn't detected anything structurally significant changing in, in the period since their first, uh. So I'm just concerned about that if we're in imminent danger of a roof coming down. And the liability of the town in terms of, uh, we, we know it's a pre-existing condition. And if a situation occurs that someone is injured as a result of that, uh, the liability falls on the town.
So I guess is your question then, do we have a definitive statement? John, you mentioned it one night, you had, um, the, the engineer was up there and I think you had, what I heard was almost a split decision between whether he thought it was good one day or not good one day from what you overheard.
Right.
But he was gonna go back and look at his previous, um, pitches, I guess, or whatever measurements he had to look at. And then he, did he come back with something in writing to us?
Just an email that said, um, after he did his review.
Yep.
He found that there was no significant change from last year's condition, which is very contrary to what he indicated the day he was here. Deputy Chief Furno was also in the attic with him and commented, um, that he saw some significant changes from the prior year as well. I questioned the board if they would like to get a second opinion. The board felt as though that one engineer as a, you know, professional engineer was sufficient, so.
So we have a definitive statement from him that there has been no significant shifting in that? And we have that in writing from him?
It is an email, yes.
You know, when Helen sent the, sent the letter or the email out about, um, this meeting tonight, it mentioned about, um, finding a temporary location if the, um, the building was found to be unstable and you couldn't use it. That was kind of outside the charge of the committee on here. If that's something you, you want us to add to that, I don't know if, uh, my colleagues would want to, you know, be able to do that or entertain that, to try to start to thinking about something for a continuity of operations if this building becomes inhabitable because there'll be a time, uh, between a new town hall and, you know, between now.
You did your interim.
Hall, if, if it becomes necessary to get out of here.
I think what she's asking, Rich, is that if something did arise and something upstairs or whatever changed, what would our Plan B be if we did have? We, we need to do it now, we, we, and we don't have a Plan B, so now where do we go? Do we go to the senior center? Do we go to the, the school? Do we go mobile? What would our emergency Plan B be? Just to have it in our back pocket, just in case.
But that was.
But that was, you know, I'm just looking at how that, it was written. If you want to do, add to that and do something like that, if these gentlemen wanna, wanna work that, I'd be glad to.
I would think about it. I mean, I would entertain it just.
I'd be up to your board and.
I, I would like to see you guys.
A whole nother ball of wax out there.
Yeah.
You're, you're now looking at all the parameters of what can we do in a hurry? And, and what resources are available out there in the public sector to, to make that happen if we haven't got anything here? And I don't know if we have time and the expertise.
Steve Furno is working on too, on that continuity of operations. You know, continuity of business on that, so it kinda.
It, it clearly is outside what your, your original requirement was, no question on that.
But I think it's needed.
Oh, I not only think it's needed, I think I sent a message back to Helen as soon as I got a message and said, you absolutely have to have an emergency plan. I think, uh, there was an announcement that you said there was eighteen inches of snow if there was.
That's the limit.
That was gonna be the limit of the stress load, is that what you call it? On top of the roof. And, uh, you, that doesn't make me comfortable. Uh, you, you catch a high wind, uh, from a, or a heavy, heavy rain, soaking rain over a couple of days. I don't know, I'm not a construction guy.
If it's excessive with heavy rain, it has to be eighteen inches of snow.
No, I understand that. What I'm saying is that that doesn't make me feel comfortable that this roof is gonna be able to withstand weather. Whether it be a heavy load of snow, I understand, but you also have other things that can, that can affect it. So, um, it, I, I think you need to get perhaps a board together or a bunch of people together that have more the expertise, expertise than I have. I'd be happy to help out, but I, I don't really know what expertise you would need to be able to say, we need an emergency, uh, facility that would be allowable, that would, we could conduct the regular town business. And it may be for a protracted period of time until we either build a new one, fix it, or whatever we end up coming up with. That's, that's quite a task.
Yeah, I think we would have to suspend what we're doing and focus on that. And then get back to this when that issue is settled. To do both at the same time with these three people who have private lives and things going on is a bit much. That's my opinion.
It, it's a matter of priorities and I, I think this, that has, I don't know about the board, but I think we need a continuity of government plan, quick.
I, I couldn't agree with you more. Um, that's why I sent it back to Helen, the.
What do you want to do, you want to put this on hold?
Put this on hold and we'll, we'll get a plan B, get Furno involved. Make a motion, John.
Well, um, okay.
All right, then I'll make a motion that we, um, suspend, um, the, the town hall feasible study that they're doing and get a plan B for emergency.
And what kind of timeframe?
I, I, I can't put a timeframe.
Well, I think we need to.
You definitely need it. You better get it before winter comes, that's.
I need it before winter, yes.
So there's an in, a very.
I think we oughta aim for September first to sort of have a plan.
I would have to say, I would have to say, uh, we need to entertain it by September, absolutely. Have a plan by September.
Right.
Get a second from you?
Yes.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.
No, I'm, I'm, I just wanna make sure I'm hearing you correctly. You're, um, willing to work on this? So you're willing to have more people join you on this? Or more people joining you on the, um, possibility of building or relocating?
This isn't a private club, the more the merrier.
Okay, so.
And if I may, just to clarify, uh, you need some people to have expertise in some of this stuff. I mean, you, you know, you've gotta get the right, we've got some of the right people for what you charged us to do. But now you're looking for an emergency situation. And I think I, I hear that's what it is. Uh, that, that's Mr. Furno and, and we need, you need some people here that can, that can look at that type of thing to make it work.
We do have individuals here that, uh, have construction type of expertise in, in the logistics and, and work in the MEMA, MEMA members, uh...
Chris, but you're talking about putting up a temporary town hall somewhere that operates and does business for the public and has waste facilities, electrical facilities, heating facilities, parking facilities. It's a big deal.
I mean, just thinking it off the top of my head, it's gonna sound like it's, it's, it's gonna be a hybrid type facility where you have a portion of town government that is accessible to the town people would be in this structure that you're talking about. And the rest of it, you're gonna have a lot of people working from home, off their laptops. I mean, I don't see, it's gonna be very difficult to find something to replicate this in a, in a, in the town.
And I think too, we need to find out, um, get a clear picture of our, our IT. I mean, there are some workplaces that you re- you have remote access to your, your desktop.
We have the ability to. We haven't.
We haven't done that yet?
Approved it for anybody, but it.
But you have the ability so that you can, and that is, now is that just the desktop or is that all of the programs in their desktop?
Everything in their desktop they could access.
Like Patriot, payroll, whatever programs we're using, that's all accessible.
So priority won't be moving service someplace.
This, this kinda brings me to another subject that I brought up when we were talking about space needs. Is that every year we see more and more things go online and more and more stuff in the computer and paper reduced. Should, uh, some sort of feasibility study as to software available and space requirements of the town hall as far as storage and files concerned versus leaping into the twenty-first century with, you know, getting online and, and getting stuff in the computer instead of in file cabinet and after file cabinet. I know the stuff I do with veterans, they have gone completely paperless in the last three years. So it, it, you know, you're spending money there, but you're not spending it in the building.
But the good news here is that we're getting some help, the software from, from the Commonwealth.
The compact, right?
Yeah, the compacts, we're looking to hopefully do exactly what you're saying.
Well, that's a big deal when it comes to.
And continuity between departments so that the same department doesn't have the same paperwork. I mean, two different departments has the same paperwork, but.
So am I hearing it clearly then? That what you're saying is you would like the, uh, whatever energy is put forward here, needs to be collaborative effort between MEMA, FEMA, whoever else you, you got involved, um, and whatever expertise we can help with that on. And that we should switch gears over to what do we do if and how do we keep it running? Is that, is that fair? Okay, that, that's what I'm hearing, okay?
I also, I also think that there should be a member of our committee or our board to be part of that. To be part of that discussion. Um, I think that we shouldn't be getting updates, that we should be in the know of what's, and some of the needs that may be, be needed. So, um, just a thought. One of us, I mean, I'll step up if I need to, that's not a problem.
Okay, good, thank you.
But if, yeah.
John, I'm sure would help as well. Uh, so he, he's got that expertise in building.
Yeah.
And you're an engineer, right? There you go.
I, I, yeah. That's not my expertise, but to.
Nor am I neither.
But you learn along the way and you can, I, I just think we need to make sure that.
To know how town government runs here.
Exactly.
That's the key. More in-depth knowledge than we have would be helpful when we start planning that. And say, no, that doesn't work because this is how that has to work. That's, that is really helpful to have somebody that can do that, so. So we changed the whole.
Well, you, you did and you had, 'cause I had so much good stuff to tell. Yes, I have to hold off now.
Maybe it's written in the Massachusetts general law somewhere exactly what we have to have available to the public. Which would dictate as to what the emergency plan is.
Yeah. Um, you know, I think there's a, you're talking a lot of research here just to find out what's required. That's why, in my own humble opinion and not being, uh, understanding all the different nuances of how it works. Um, the senior center almost, or a portion of it, almost made the most sense for a short period of time. I, I don't think I wanna take over the building or half the building, a third of the building, a quarter of the building over a period of time. But, um, you, you, you wouldn't have to worry about quarry, you've got, uh, computer, uh, is up there. Uh, there's some connectivity that could be, could be made or be enhanced, that could even help. Potentially maybe BVT could help because they're the ones who wired it up to begin with, so at least they know what's in there. Um, and that maybe could be of help.
There, there's another critical element here. We'd have to run fiber to wherever our facility is gonna be. We've got a fiber link here.
It's very limited parking up there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Well.
This is a big problem here.
Yeah. I mean, there's more parking there than there is in some places.
Well, you do also have the property to the brook. I mean, you have into the woods.
You got, you've got, you've got an, I think there's enough parking there to make it work, except when the seniors are there. That's gonna be a problem, obviously, but that's the same problem you're gonna have with the school. When the buses and the kids and everybody's up there. Then you got quarry checks and all that stuff, which becomes problematic. You haven't got a lot of choices here. You just don't. I mean, those are the only buildings you really got. The library, I don't think, has the parking and doesn't have.
They don't have a septic.
They don't.
I, I look at it this way. I, I would look at it the way I do and what I do for a living.
Okay.
I would look at it in two parts. One have a part where we're running the business, we're running the town. We need a place where they can come in and service the town. That's your first part. Tax people, this and that, and all of that, okay? The second part is, where do we have a meeting? We have it up at the senior center. We'll have it up at the, we're only gonna rent this, you know, have the space just for a meeting if we after every other Monday or this and that. And, 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 and the short stand, the way I look at it, and I've done this before in an emergency situation, where I've done it a couple of times, is I would dump a couple of trailers out here with handicap accessible, hook up the water and the septic there. You put your fiber out there, you're right here, okay? You got your parking. That takes care of running your town and giving access to the town and the people. And it's really not that much of an inconvenience. It's already there, we got an empty space, it's flat, you could put the trailers there, it's only temporarily. But to hook the septic and the water is right out here and, and, and electric is right out here, it wouldn't be a big deal. The second part is you definitely have to have a place to have a meeting. We have the senior center, we have other places, so. I, I think if we did it in two parts, instead of trying to find one spot, that's tough.
Exactly.
At least that's the way I look at it.
On there, and you said it better than I did. I meant the hybrid thing, but you're right. You gotta have, this is gonna be multiple pieces to make this thing work if we're forced out of this building.
And I'd be very, and I'd be very honest with you. With, if I picked up this phone right now, within four hours, I'd have five trailers out there, handicap being set up like that.
Okay, so how do you spell your last name, John?
Yeah, yeah. All right, hey, congratulations.
Thank you, John.
I'm just saying.
You're not, you're not gonna volunteer.
That's a job.
Turn it off, turn it off. I'm, I'm just saying, but it would have to be done. The way I look at it, everybody's trying to do so much with one space. I don't look at it that way. I, I, I broaden my thought on this and say, okay, the first thing I have to do is make sure.
Day-to-day operations.
Day-to-day operation, like Helen said, I gotta make sure the taxes, um, make sure the people, the town, we answer them and, and the dog licenses and this and that and the border health. Okay, we got trailers out there, it'll take care of all that. Then the next thing we have to do, oh, we need to have our monthly meetings, they need to have their monthly. Okay, why can't we use the senior center? It holds enough, it's got plenty of parking.
I've had that issue and my wife brought up a couple of times.
That would be.
Just, just quickly, Mr. Chairman, the only thing to Mr. Lars' point is that we would not be able to put the trailers out front because if this building were to fall, that whole front wall is going to fall that way.
But you know what?
So there would be a safety issue unless the building was stabilized, which would be an expense.
Who's ever given you that information? I, I, I think they're going a little bit too far because the trailers would be by the road and this building is not gonna go that far out.
Your height versus your.
I'd be very honest with you, Helen.
Another consideration is with this doom and gloom here. If the building does go, you got a lot of stuff stored in here. You don't wanna think about getting it out after the building collapses.
Exactly, that, that.
It all has to be moved before again.
Critical records, good point.
All these files and.
Good point.
No, I'm just, that I understand, I mean, that's just another step, but I'm just saying.
I think that, that all needs to be in the plan.
Right, that all needs to be in the.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, if we try to find one place or this and that, I, 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 I think that that's a, that's a hard, hard thing to do in this town. But I think if you broke it up in different entities, like trailers for this or whatever, one, meetings over here, you gotta break it up, kinda make it a little easier.
Good point, John, good point, good point. The, the, and the other concern you, you've really got is that, um, this building is probably not salvageable. That's basically what I just told you here. We understand that. Everybody in town has to understand that, okay? What that entails is that if you are going to put up a new building, um, it is going to cost probably between three to four million or more, help me, John. And at the same timeframe, um, when you look at, uh, that situation, you've got a pretty long lead time on doing all the particulars that have to be done, filing and all that stuff. So it could be a very long, protracted situation in terms of trailers and not, that, that's not the right thing to do, but that's what we'd have to do, um, to make it work. So those are some things that I think we've really gotta be very cognizant of, that, that could become very costly just in doing two different things.
You gotta do a cost study too, I mean, I, I.
I, I think too, I mean, you're, you're talking about this as an emergency situation. When really it, it is an emergency slash transitional. Because by the time you have funding, by the time you, because we can't, you know, you need that because of all the, like you said, the processes and getting town, meeting vote, getting the money, getting the building. I mean, this is not an emergency situation we're looking at. We're looking at a transition situation, ready to roll out in September if need be.
You need a master plan before you can even apply to go and ask for any help from the state on any of those things.
And I think we need to.
And we've been waiting on a master plan for what? So without, without benefit of that, I'm just trying to tell you, there's some backups on this that could protract this thing.
On, on the positive side, and you're right on that piece, that's part of.
A lot of the process.
The, the budget that the two boards voted on last Wednesday night, I watched the meeting on there. Kinda puts us on a road now to be able to get a bond rating for what you did the other night. And raise the stabilization fund into an area where it's, the numbers are starting to be compatible. Once you do the bond rating, it's what you're gonna need to finance a new building. And beyond just the town hall, not too far behind you, it is the police station that's in need of some work.
Yep.
The fire station. And at some point in time, we're gonna have to consider a highway facility. So there's a whole lot of things that are, that are going, that are going down this track here. I think what you did the other night sets us on that path. But what Jerry's talking about, that master plan, sets us on a path to be able to get, uh, grant money, community, uh, the community block grant money that's out there. To be able to ask for something like that for the town. So you had some spocks here going, I think it's, we gotta keep them, keep them going.
Could we please put the planning board on our agenda to explain to them where we are with this, what our direction is with this? And how that master plan is going to be integral into future endeavors to get money and that we need that sooner than later.
What I'll do, when I see the meet, uh, review this meeting, I'll try to get in touch with a number of individuals.
Yeah.
And see if we can get dates and coordinate some type of an effort to.
Cause part of what's citing a town hall, it needs to be kind of, uh, mixed with what's going on with the master plan. What, what's the town, where's the town going? How is it, uh, wanna see this downtown area look? And how does citing a new town hall fit in with that? So it's kind of all hooked together here, so.
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, I did look up to find out what the cost of bonding is. There is a fee for, for getting a bond, we know that. Um, and the information I've got back, cost of a bond issue depends on the amount being borrowed, which makes sense. The cost includes rating agency fee, financial advisor fee, paying agency fee, bond counsel, imprinting charges. Fees are ten thousand dollars for a two million dollar bond. They're fifteen thousand dollars for a three million dollar bond. Um, the other thing that she, uh, mentioned here, the financial advisor mentioned, was that when you get a bond, you can take the ten or fifteen thousand dollars that is your upfront cost, you roll it into the bond. Okay, so then you, you then have to look at what your duration's gonna be and things of that nature. Now, that, that's a piece that would help us on the financial side, but we can't even ask the state to help us on that until we get the master plan done. So we're kind of held hostage here to a master plan. We at least know that the bonding issue, if you go to do it, is like I said, ten for two and fifteen grand for three.
Unabeng came in, oh, God, eighteen months ago? Is it that long ago?
Yeah.
And he sat here and he went through all of the possible options for money.
Yeah, we were here the night.
That was a rural development fund he was talking about, again-
All different, but that was one he highlighted, but he gave us all of our options.
Yeah, the rural development fund actually can extend it over forty years.
Yes.
Uh, that was very appealing, especially at today's interest rates before they go up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, you've, you've got kinda master plan, go off with bond issue, get the state to help us, how do we finance it? Those are all the things that need to be done, um, to be able to move the town forward so that we can have a center of town that we like, we own, we can have a municipal building we can be proud of. Um, and those are all pretty important things that need to be done in order so that we can move it forward.
Isn't that why that grant for the capital, uh, plan is so critical? Because that's, I think, how we're gonna be able to structure this whole thing? Because on top of that, you've got a school committee that's gonna be wanting to do something with the high school up there.
Right.
It's another building that's what, fifty years old now at least, uh, that needs a lot of work. So, they're gonna be coming at us with that too, and we're gonna have to be able to figure out how to fit all of these pieces of the puzzle together here to make it all work.
And, and it really is a puzzle, and it needs to start and, and build it. Um, so, those, I, I wanted to give you at least what I found out about the bondings because I think there's been some concern about, oh, my God, that cost is outrageous. Um, it's a lot of money, no question. Uh, we spent twenty years to find out that this building probably can't be fixed, and you're gonna spend ten or fifteen to try to, if you need to go out and get bonding, uh, and roll it into the bond issue, uh, of ten or fifteen to get up to three millions to help us. So, I, I mean, you know, you're gonna, pay me now, pay me later, but you're gonna have to start to be able to put a plan together and be able to follow the process. I don't know how else you're gonna do it. So, don't wanna be the doomsayer, but, um-
You're pretty good at it.
Well, there's a reality and then you can stick your head in the sand. I'm tired of sticking my head in the sand. It's time we did something around here. Joseph, did you have any, um, information concerning the, uh, wasn't it the, uh, state rep had said that we might go into Boston and, and try to petition for some of that money that-
It was a-
Eight hundred thousand originally?
Was that Curz?
It's Curz, right?
No, that was Fat Man.
Oh, it's Fat Man, I'm sorry.
And we're just waiting from, feed, feedback from Fat Man. But I, I indicated that I'd be willing to go in with him, uh, to, you know, to the state house.
If you need, you need anybody else, I'll be, if available, I'd be happy to go in as well, try to petition, try to help us.
I found that, just through the Centennial and down at Senator Fat Man's office, that it's very difficult to get him. You tend to get an aide. Um, so, I think, you know, we need to, we need to get him. Like, we can't get an aide because you go through that cycle a lot, um, with him. And I don't know if reaching out to Representative Kuros, who has always been receptive to meeting face-to-face and talking, getting him to get to Fat Man. I don't know how, you know, if we can do that, but I find that Senator Fat Man, we don't always get, um, at least in my dealings, um, I get an aide, I don't get a quick response. Where Representative Kuros is much more personally involved in the endeavors that he's doing.
Here.
That's just my, my opinion of that.
So, um, that's kinda the nuts and bolts of what, and what we were attempting to do, and then with the March fifteenth letter from Helen, kinda put us on a little bit of a different trajectory once we found out the building literally is, the walls starting to move again. So, that's kinda where we're at. If, if, do you have any other questions or anything else in terms of the maps or anything else?
I think we've accomplished a lot this evening in setting a course to go forward. Thank you for your effort.
We'll be in touch.
We'll be in touch.
So, a meeting and then a follow-up?
Meeting's at your house, John. Yeah, it's all, it's the only way we can do it, I think. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Correspondence, none. Appointments and rec, uh, resignations. We have one appointment. And that's to vote, uh, to appoint an, uh, to fill an unexpired term on the, uh, planning board until the next election. And the appointment is that of Steve Furno. So, I would entertain a motion to appoint Steve Furno to a, uh, an expired term expiring next April.
Did they send over a letter?
This is it. Yep, this memo. It's okay.
It wasn't in my box.
It's right here.
Time meeting will, uh, will be on the table here. Okay.
Row?
Hi.
Hi.
This is when you seconded that?
Yes, I did. If I didn't say it out loud, I wrote it in my paper.
Executive Secretary's report, um-
I have nothing for you.
I, I do, you know, with, I have notes here that, uh, this basically all involves town council, and, uh, perhaps we should invite Barbara in.
They will.
And, you know, I've got one eighty-one Main Street on the P and W issue. Uh, one seventy-one Central Street, which we discussed this tonight, and I like to keep tabs on, uh, what's going on with Mark's garage.
It's getting bigger.
New business? Uh, I don't have anything in the building. Selectman's forum.
I have something I'd like to talk about here. It was brought to my attention by the chief of police that we are having issues with the playground next door. There was people, a whole bunch of people, that are non-resident making a, excuse my language, a hell of a mess in the, in the-
Really?
And they are not by any means residents of Millville. So, I asked him, why didn't he approach him, and he's kinda like, I, it's kinda like a gray area because we have no signage. And I'd like to ask the board, maybe we oughta put some signage out there for Millville residents only, or something, but they are definitely not from Massachusetts. And they did make a mess, and I'm not gonna discuss what kind of a mess, but it's not good.
Not garbage?
Sanitary.
Human.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the reason I, the reason why I'm hesitant is because I know the Millville playground amongst the parents is very liked very much because, um, for, because it is one fenced in and the younger population of kids, I know, like, people who do home daycare will sometimes come here because it is enclosed, the equipment is appropriate, um, the handicap swing is a big thing, and the, just the setup and the, the sidewalk around.
You're talking about during the week, correct?
Mm-hmm.
This is on the weekend, where he's having a problem.
Yeah.
So, I'm just asking the board, what's their thoughts? How do we, uh?
Well, they have the cameras. Can they, do they know?
I just gave them two more cameras.
Do they know, I mean-
No, they don't know.
I mean, is the camera, is it something that can be investigated and find out who it is and tell them that, that they are not allowed, that we can issue them a letter stating that we? I don't know. Um, I don't know. How do you regulate that?
Yeah.
Or is it kids in the middle of the night jumping the fence and causing trouble? I don't, I don't-
This is during the daytime.
This was on a weekend.
Yeah. So, I'm just bringing it to the board's attention. It's just something food for thought.
Yeah.
Uh, you could talk to the chief or whatever.
Yeah, I-
And then take it from there. I'm just relaying a message.
My, my personal view on that is maybe a little extra effort initially in policing the situation or monitoring the situation before we-
I said the same thing to him, but I just want, he asked me to say something, I'm saying something.
Well, I mean, if they're, if they're leaving human waste and we have cameras and we can figure out who they are or license plates of when they come in, you know, maybe we can do some follow-up. Um, I mean, we can't vote on anything this evening because it's there, but, um, I, I just would hate to turn anyone away that wants to come to a playground. Do we need signage that, you know, you may be asked to leave or, you know, you, I, I don't know what that signage is.
I don't know what's legal, what's not legal on that. All I know is we can't do anything if there's no signage out there. If we put signage out there, what are we allowed to put out there so we don't cross the line, I should, I should say? I'm just relaying a message, that's all I'm doing.
Mm-hmm. I don't know what the answer is.
Okay.
I think maybe put in our next, put it on to talk to the chief and see what-
Or we just go over and talk to the chief.
Just go, okay. We're gonna-
Yeah.
Um, I would, can I just, can I ask?
Sure.
Um, two things. One is, uh, last week I called the members, um, was it last week? Twenty-second, April twenty-second, I called the members just to make sure that our cable policy was still in place and we were following it, um, talking to all the members. I did send an email, um, to our cable to tell them that, to continue the process of airing any materials, um, per our procedure, per the cable procedure in place. And Helen, what it was, was they recorded the senior center meeting and I guess the school or school committee or school superintendent asked them not to air it, but, um, the selectmen were polled if we were gonna continue. I polled them that day, it was a Friday. Um, if we were gonna continue to follow our procedure of airing our cable as we always have. And so, then it was, um, I sent an email. Did I, did I copy and copy you on that now? I think I copy and copy you though.
Yeah.
Um, I'll get it for you, just that we follow our, our procedure, taping and posting meetings. Um, so, I did that. This other thing, um, and I know it was mentioned about the parade, and I want, I want people to know, because I've, I've gotten many compliments on the parade uh, for the Centennial Committee, and I want it to be known that the Centennial Committee as a whole, the eleven members, did not do the parade. There is a parade committee that was headed by Jean Poulain when she actually started on the Centennial along with Chief Landry, Margaret, Lois, Kathy, Paul, Laurie.
Laurie, Linda Basset, and Steve Furno.
Laurie Legi, Leg-
Legere.
Legere, Linda Basset, Steve Furno, who were instrumental in doing all of that work. And I think sometimes people think, oh, it's the Centennial Committee. It was some members, but I decorated a float and I picked up balloons. That, that was, I had one little trailer. The Centennial Committee had one little trailer. So, I just wanted to be known that the hard work by the parade committee that they, that they did, um, was wonderful. People, the outpouring and the kudos out there. And the best part is seeing everyone posting pictures with old friends and talking about running into old friends. And I think it, I think it did exactly what it was supposed to do, um, as the first event for the Centennial year. So, I want to thank that committee for their work. So, that's all I have.
Okay. Kudos to the parade committee.
Not the Centennial.
Selectman's forum, um, you're gonna, you're gonna review the mail?
I did, and I made, um, I just made, it's not like major things, just like a couple little things, but I left my folder at home because I came from this, it was, it was a couple more, um-
Go for it, this side.
I know. No, this side too.
This side.
Um, there was a couple, it wasn't major, it was just, I think, more wording and to make sure, I, I think there was, I had four different ones, I don't know if I can-
Could you get them to Helen tonight?
I can.
Give them?
Yeah, and I, I will, I'll just, um, blind C.C. everyone.
Yeah, just give them to Helen.
Yeah, there were just little things. Um, when I get home, I can scan it and, or write it out for you. It wasn't, it wasn't anything major, it was just, it was more kind of, um, things.
I, I'm good with that.
Mm-hmm. And the only thing, I know, the one thing on this side that I wrote was that it was, um, I didn't know if we should put something about kinda the, the whole warrant as to, these are, like, you know, zoning bylaws, uh, just list, not everything, but list some of those other things that are out of the norm, like the zoning, the marijuana, the solar panels, the BMR regional agreement, um, the hunting bylaw. I, I don't know if those could be kinda highlighted as, like, other topics that are taken up. Well, it just, just even if it's a box and it's like eight, you know, just so they know that it's not just this we want them to go for, we want them to go for everything. And I know the moderator, it was the moderator in the bill, how it operates, I don't know if we could somehow get something else in there, just to highlight those other articles.
We don't have a lot of time.
It's a quick fix.
It's a quick fix.
It is. Well, she's got the document, it's a cut and paste kinda thing. So, I will do that this evening.
Okay. Our next, uh, regular meeting, the May sixteenth at, uh, seven, seven P.M. Just, uh, next Monday evening is our annual town meeting. We're gonna, uh, do signatures. And then, uh, we're gonna, uh, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, uh, Sections twenty-one, Paragraph two, contract negotiations with non-personal, we're gonna go, non-union personnel, we're gonna go into executive session. Uh, and, um, we're not gonna come back live, we're gonna come back to regular meeting to adjourn, but we won't be coming back.
Just to adjourn.
Just to adjourn. I'll get it right sometime, eventually. All good, Joe.
You going to the executive session now?
Mm-hmm. After we sign.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just signing warrants and then going into executive session. There's a nice article in the paper the other day.
Oh, dear. Yeah, I tell you one thing, those kids at Hellwood Drive that bought some time capsule, really did.
Looking forward to when they do the time capsule. I know it's on hold right now, but-
Yeah, it's, uh, pretty cool though. And then the twenty-five-ish, I don't know, it's funny, I don't know, it was me. Uh, they say you gotta meet with the people who construct it, that's the people who are in construction, engineering, I go, gee, y'all. All three girls, and all there with their little hot hats, and they were so cute. Teeth were like, you know? All right, see you later.
Later. Thank you, Jerry.
It's all right.
Seal the chambers.
Thanks. Seal the cha- They'll never get out.
I think I got them all.
Tim will go up here.
Was there a- There hasn't been a motion yet.
I make a motion to go out of regular meeting, going to go into executive session, M L, M G L, C dot thirty A, twenty-
M L, M G L C dot thirty A, twenty-one, there's two contract negotiations. Only to come back to, um, adjourn, regular meeting.
Go second.
Roll.
Aye.
Aye.